Good evening, it is 7:30. I now call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of April 21st, 2022 to order. 7:30. A reminder, everyone please silence your cell phone and devices. Rise for the pledge allegiance, please. Start with the roll call. Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Granitak.
Present.
Ms. Jett Harris.
Present.
Mr. Peck.
Here.
Ms. Thurlow.
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Here.
Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Maholland. Sue is here, and in for Ms. Hardy tonight is Mr. Cunningham. He's out in the hallway there. Moving on, item number one, public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission, excuse me, and subject matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we move on to public hearing number one, excuse me. The application of Wayne Frazier for Niantic Bay Nutrition for a special permit to operate a juice bar. Takeout only, no food, at 81, excuse me, Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic. Note for the record, legal has been run?
Correct.
And now, Mr. Application.
Um, Mr. Chairman, there is a memo from me that I want to read.
Would you like to read that for me, please, Ann? Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
This one?
Yeah.
April 21st, 2022, to East Lime Zoning Commission from William Maholland regarding special permit application, Niantic Bay Nutrition, 81 Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicant Wayne Frazier for Niantic Bay Nutrition is applying for a special permit to operate a juice bar at the above referenced property. The use is considered as a fast food restaurant, which is a special permit use in the CB zoning district. The term "fast food" is defined by the zoning regulations as "any establishment whose principal business is the sale of prepared or rapidly prepared foods, confections or beverages to the customer in a ready-to-consume state, and whose method of operation is such that customers normally order the product at a central location, separate from the tables or counters used for consumption. Cafeteria service establishments in which a customer serves himself while passing along a food service line are also considered fast food restaurants." See Section 20.25. In their application, the use will be for takeout only, no food items will be served. There will be an interior floor area open to the public for ordering purposes. It will consist of approximately 100 square foot of area. Parking required for the use is minimal for spaces. Overall, the property has 27 onsite parking spaces. 23 are dedicated to the other building tenants, which are an attorney's office and hair salon. The site itself is a developed site, which was recently upgraded and is considered compliant with our regulations. In addition, the building facade was recently remodeled. In conclusion, this application is essentially a use permit for the juice bar, which will be a novel addition to the many foodie beverage options in Niantic Village.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlow. Moving on, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everything was in the memo, I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is, as you said, it's a takeout only, we're just occupying the front part of the store, and we've passed the Leged Light Health District inspection, which was done the other day, and we have no issues outstanding.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in your package, there's a site plan, it's essentially the one you're asking. And moving my memo, this site was upgraded substantially, remodeled a year, 12 years ago, so compliant with our regulations. It is next to and near the BQ, but it is not part of that property, it is a separate entity, you would see on the site plan where the vision is on in the building.
This will be seasonal? No, this will be year-round. The juice bars are known as shake bars, are in the nutritionist's side of the juices, and there's a big following around, no matter what town you go to, it seems to be a big following. And my granddaughter has worked for a juice bar up in Montville, I believe, and they have like five of them now. So we're opening up a small one here, in a predetermined, her landlord is her sister, so you might want to wish her well on that, because she has the hair stuff. And I know, Bill, you're into heavy nutrition, so I'm sure you'll be interested in.
You can bond my boat, yeah?
What are the hours that you're opening? Is it seven days, and how late is it open?
Well, right now, it's probably going to be seven days going into the introduction and so on. The hair salon is closed on Mondays typically, so she may follow that, but right now, we're leaving the hours open. I think she's going to open early in the morning.
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM. And then closing at 3:00. But again, we have to kind of go by the, maybe-
Go with the flow.
Yeah, winter may be a little bit different, so it'll be adjusted as we go along.
It's like a health craze, too, right?
Yes, yes, and as you can see, I need it, so.
I would say, I wish you all the best, yeah. And this is just basically all natural ingredients, right?
Yes.
I mean, we're not like-
The company that supplies is a well-known-
Herbalife.
Herbalife.
Okay.
Herbalife.
Yeah.
It's a national company that supplies these mixtures to put into the juices, and they are good.
Ms. Mall, anything to add?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Any questions from the public? On the juice bar? Nope? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public, or continue the public hearing?
Go both.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Jett. Moving on to item number two, which is, I should vote, huh? Thank you, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, recuse myself.
Okay. Next item, we're going to have to recuse Mr. Peck. I'd like to invite Ms. Markovitz up. Item number two is request of Fresh Lime Partners LLC applicant for a special permit to operate a cannabis establishment pursuant to Section 11.2, .13 of the East Lime Zoning Regulations at property identified in the application as 15 Colton Road, East Lime Assessors Map, 09.0, Lot 14. Legal has been run?
Yes, it has.
We have a memo.
April 21st, 2022, to East Lime Zoning Commission from William Maholland regarding special permit application cannabis establishment, 15 Colton Road. The applicant Fresh Lime Partners LLC, represented by attorney Theodore Harris, is applying for a special permit to operate a retail cannabis establishment at the property referenced above. The application consists of a special permit application and site plan to redevelop the subject property. As the commission may recall, it approved a text amendment on October of 2021 to allow retail cannabis establishments by special permit in the light industrial zones. The use is subject to additional regulatory controls that were also adopted at that time. These are found in Section 25.5 of the zoning regulations, which is entitled "Table of Minimum Controls for Specific Special Permit." These controls are: One, definition. For the purpose of this special permit, cannabis establishment shall main retailer as defined in Section 1 Subsection 45 of 2021 Public Act 1201, the act, or micro cultivator as described in Section 1 Subsection 36 of the act. Two, local restrictions. The property on which the cannabis establishment is located shall not be less than 2,000 feet from the following, measured at the closest mutual property line. Public or private school, places of worship, public or private playgrounds, any other cannabis establishment as defined herein or in the act, places serving alcoholic beverages for conception on premises, hospital, library, licensed daycare centers. I guess that's it. Three, operation hours, shall not exceed 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Four, parking, shall be in accordance with retail store requirements unless modified by the zoning commission. Five, sales consumption. All sales or cultivation shall occur within a building and no consumption, use of the product shall occur onsite. Six, licensing. The cannabis establishment must be licensed by the state of Connecticut and shall be operated in conformity with all applicable rules and regulations. A review of the proposal and the applicable regulations finds that the application, in my view, is compliant said zoning regulations. Attorney Harris, the applicant's representative, is here and will give a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Mr. Harris.
Good evening, members of the commission. I have a little packet for each of you. There's three new items. And this also is a copy of mine. I'm sorry, I didn't leave you a second. Excuse me, in your packet, you have three new items. A copy of the sign that was posted on the site more than 15 days before this public hearing. The floor plan for the internal operation of the facility, and the wetlands permit that was issued this week by Mr. Geishel. And I've given the clerk those three items for the record. With me is Lori Zerenda, who is going to be the operator of this facility. She's experienced in the cannabis area, having accomplished a facility in a nearby town oriented toward medical marijuana. She's going to bring that experience to this site, and I believe that she will be an asset to the site. She is very familiar with the regulatory framework, both former and current regulatory framework, and is very knowledgeable about the operation of this type of facility. Unfortunately, tonight, our project engineer, Joe Wren, was unable to be here because he has two conflicting engagements this evening, so I'm going to act as the engineer as well. This site contains an existing building, and we're going to use that existing building and renovate the interior. There will also be upgrades to the site, including additional parking, and landscaping, and lighting, and a variety of other things which we will see on the plan. The site also contains more spaces than are required under the regulatory framework. The regulatory framework requires one space per 250 square feet of building space. We're actually about nine or 10 spaces over that calculation, and there are existing spaces and additional spaces to, both in front and rear, and you'll see that in the site plan shortly. So let's look at the regulatory requirements, which actually was recited in the introduction. There are two sets of regulations, one's the town regulation, and the other is the state regulations. With respect to the town regulation, the standards are in 25.5, as Mr. Maholland indicated, and the first section of that section, if you will, is the alternative of a retailer or a micro cultivator. The retailer is where the request for this evening-
Just for clarification, you can't do both, correct?
Correct, yes. It's either or, because there's-
They have separate applications.
There are separate categories under the act. There are location restrictions, as was read earlier, and if you do the GIS, you'll find that there's none of these facilities located within that 2,000 feet of the site, and that's one reason why it was picked. Sure.
If you have the two applications, you're going for one. Close is approved. Are you going for the second application?
No, no.
Could another guy come in and be a cultivator?
No, no, because there's a limit of only one facility or one establishment, I should say.
One cultivator and one retailer?
No, one establishment, that's the general term under the act, and there's a variety of types of establishments. But the state law provides that you can only have one establishment within per 25,000 population. So we're below that, so basically, we're limited to one establishment.
I believe, maybe I misread it, but I believe that it said, "one micro cultivator and one retailer under 25,000."
You can't, no, you can't do that.
In Segbook, I think in Segbook, the guy has said it, or both?
It depends on the population.
Yeah, right, right.
So we're below 25,000 population, so you can only have one establishment within the town.
It says, "and," in addition, Section 148 of Public Act 21-1, June 2021, special session allows for municipalities to have up to one licensed adult-use cannabis retailer and one licensed micro cultivator per 25,000 residents.
That's what I thought it was, too.
I stand corrected.
And, not or.
I'll double check that. My understanding was that it was-
So my question was, can somebody else come in now, within, say, 100 feet away from you, and be a cultivator? You're a retailer-
Correct.
And he wants to be a cultivator.
Well, in fact, the local regulations provide that you cannot have a second facility. In other words, the separation distance is, it would have to be 2,000 feet away. If you look at the beginning-
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but-
Please keep in mind that the act does say, "can have up to," if this is what's in question, so if it does turn out to be this way, we're not there yet, and the commission or the town can have the say.
I guess that brings to mind another question. It appears that you're engaging in retail or recreation, but you're also engaging in medical, and DCP, I believe, separates those two, there's a divide, or is that considered as one establishment?
I don't believe it's possible.
They're separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
They're separate?
They did allow, in the new law, for what they call a hybrid retailer, which has medical and recreational in the same building.
Ms. Zerenda, could you please step up?
I'm sorry.
Please, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Lori Zerenda, 40 Mastoway Road, East Lime. So, yeah, they're licensing some people to just do recreational sales, and they're licensing some people to do what they call hybrid sales-
And that's what you intend to do.
-which is medical and recreational in the same building.
And that's what you intend to do?
That's what I would like to do, yes.
And where do you stand in that licensing process?
So, there's a lottery for licenses, and so, applications will close May 3rd for, or 4th, May 3rd to 4th, for recreational sales. They close May 24th for hybrid lottery entries, but there's a way around the lottery, and that way is for an existing dispensary to partner with a social equity applicant, and if those two come together, they want the existing knowledgeable people to kind of mentor a social equity applicant. And a social equity applicant is a person who grew up or lives in a, what they call, a census tract area that was impacted by the war on drugs. So, we have a social equity applicant in my family that is going to partner with the dispensary in New Haven, which is called Affinity Health and Wellness. Together, they form Fresh Lime Partners. I'm going to be there to be the dispensary manager, to mentor the social equity applicant in running the business, and if the existing dispensary helps the social equity applicant, they don't have to go through the lottery process, the license will just be given to them.
So your intention is to be a hybrid, and DCP considers it one establishment-
Right.
-for the purposes of zoning and their population per capita requirement?
Correct.
But that still means the cultivator open.
So, I suppose if what you read is correct, then in town, you could allow a cultivator in a light industrial zone if they meet the requirements. We don't want to be a cultivator, so we're here just for the special permit. Yeah, right.
In addition, the local regulation provides that there's a 2,000-foot separation distance between another establishment, and quite frankly, you could not have another establishment anywhere else in the ally zone because it would, the industrial park zone-
Wouldn't meet the criteria.
-has a school in it, and the other light industrial zone has a church in it, so it would, those wouldn't be available.
If I may, technically, when you look at the GIS and you map it out, this is the only location, because of the other items that are in the 25.5 that are in my memo, they are in or near the ally industrial areas, so you essentially just have this one site because of the restrictions that this commission adopted, I think it was October of last year.
Correct. So in effect, we're banning the cultivating. It's not allowed?
By default.
By default, yes. Because it could not be located. That's a practical matter.
And just for the record, there are separate licenses, correct?
Correct.
So in other words, so if this application does get approved for this applicant, they cannot turn around and do both?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
But could they do it in another part of East Lime?
No, because as a practical matter, it's only in the ally zones, and the other two ally zones have other activities that are prohibited with proximity of 2,000 square feet, schools, churches. So you can't meet the separation distance in the local regulations.
Why was it one 200 feet?
2,000 feet.
I'm joking, yeah.
The only-
I know, isn't it?
The only area would be the doctors', the new doctors' offices, which is just over 2,000 square feet from the school, but as a practical matter, they're not going to locate The next standard is the operating hours at 9:00 to 9:00 PM. We would ask for those hours. We suspect that during weekdays, they might be cut back, but with experience, we'll adjust the hours, but we would like the statutory hours. Parking in accordance with the one per 250, and the site plan shows that we have excess parking based on that calculation. And the next two items are consistent with the state statute. There shall be no consumption or use of cannabis onsite. And the last one refers to the standards, the 300-page special act and the regulations that attach to it. Those form the fabric of the regulatory framework, and you need to adhere to all those requirements. Lori mentioned the social equity aspect of this, which means that the big guys, if you will, the corporate guys that are going to flood the lottery applications, there's a room for the smaller guy, and that's what Lori intends to do. This also is an ideal location for this type of facility. There's an easy access to I-95 and state roads, and it's not likely to have any significant impact on internal traffic in the town of East Lime. There is also a benefit to the town. There's 3% of the grocery receipts that go to the town, and there are some restrictions on use, but it can be used for, for example, roads and scenic improvements to roads, public functions for the town, clinics, and that type of thing, and there's a variety of other uses that that money could be put to. Lori's looked at some neighboring states and with towns this size, and best estimate, it could be somewhere between $600,000 and $1.2 million annually to the town. The state regulatory requirements are very extensive, as I mentioned, there's 300 pages of Public Act and another 55, 60 pages of regulations that go along with it. One, I'll summarize some of the significant aspects of these regulations, and I like to call it seed to sale. The production and packaging and ultimate sale is a stream, and it's controlled at every step of the way. In fact, once it's packaged, it carries a unique identifier, and there's a point-of-sale aspect to it, because once, every sale, it gets immediately transmitted to a central computer in the state of Connecticut, and you must track incoming and outgoing serial numbers, and if there's any discrepancy, it has to be resolved virtually immediately. But the controls that the state is- But the controls that the state has imposed makes, assures, number one, that there's no extraneous sales of non-governmental-approved cannabis and also that, obviously, that the state gets this money as well. There's also standards for the operation in terms of facilities. The facilities must have, must have a full alarm system, both fire and burglar alarms. And these are just some of these items that are required. They must separate public space from the actual inventory and workspace. Employees must be trained and have at least two days of training. There must be a security system on-site. There's other considerations as well. For example, even if this facility or this establishment were not in town, it doesn't mean that cannabis would not be used in town. There is restrictions even with respect to anything bought at this facility, with respect to use in restaurants and public parks. But other than that, you can, anyone can have in their possession an ounce and a half of cannabis and can walk down the street and smoke to the heart's content. So, if this facility were approved, it would make no difference, no probability of the use within the town of East Lime. In short, I think this would be a benefit to the town and with little detriment. The location of, near the highways and the benefit to the town of the 3%, I think outweighs any potential for traffic. And as I said, the individual can walk down the street and having bought it somewhere else and you would not be able to control it in any event. Lori would like to go over the internal plans, what you're in your package.
So, regulations require a lot of things as far as the setup of a dispensary. When you walk in the door, the door is usually, we have a vestibule, so you can't actually access the lobby and come inside unless someone lets you in. We have to check IDs, make sure everybody is, like in medical, that they're actually a medical patient or 21 or older in the case of recreational sales. Once they're cleared to go in, there's another locked door that they would enter. So, if you're looking at the floor plan that you have, there's going to be a, there's two sets of doors you'll notice in the, let me get my glasses on.
So, they just can't walk right in there?
Right, right. Yeah, they're going to have to be, yeah, they'll either be buzzed in or they have to be let in by a security officer.
Do you have a maximum amount of people allowed in at one time?
Um, that would be, I think that would be depending on the fire marshal, I guess. You know, if there's limits as far as what the town would require for in a building that size. What we did in medical was, we had a counter with six checkout stations. We would only bring six people in at a time. One would be working with each, was a pharmacy technician because everyone in the medical dispensary had to be either a pharmacist or a pharmacy technician. So, we would have the six checkout stations and a pharmacy tech would be at each station and we would have one customer working with that person. Everybody else would be waiting in the lobby and when that register was free, the next person would be brought in. And we kept it that way just because you don't want too many people milling around on the inside sales area because it gets noisy and you can't hear each other talk and things like that. So, yeah, there would be some control of how many people you let in at a time.
If I don't mind just sliding in a question right there, it's kind of unfolding in my head. Do you have, because this is so new on the retail side and recreational side, do you have any sense of the volume of traffic in business?
It's really, I mean, like when Massachusetts opened, they, the way that they did it, I would, I would hope our state won't do that and I hope they learned from it because I think only two or three dispensaries opened on this one particular day and they have lines of like eight hours long, people waiting in line to get inside. I think that Connecticut will hopefully learn from that. And then, once they feel there's enough product, because the growers have to ramp up production to be able to support this program in the first place, once they feel there's enough product, I think the state will allow sales, but they're also going to wait, I've heard, that until there's several, a certain number of dispensaries ready to go at the same time and not have that kind of massive.
And there's no limit to, you're not limited to being a Connecticut resident, right?
Well, legally, you're not supposed to cross state lines with it, but a lot of people go to Massachusetts and buy it and bring it back to Connecticut.
So, is my concern is, you know, flood from New York or Ireland or other states?
Well, New York's going recreational as well, so hopefully they'll take care of their own and Massachusetts is.
They'll go there, then to the state, to the beach. That's the way to spend the day, often swim.
Yeah, so New Jersey, New York are already going recreational. New Jersey just started today, as a matter of fact. And New York is coming and Massachusetts already is. So, I don't know how much interstate, Rhode Island is not yet. So, that might be the only, you might get some trickle from there.
Follow-up to his question, security in the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to assume you're going to have a lot of cameras.
Oh, definitely.
Your cycling has a lot of lighting, appropriate lighting.
I think we'll be physically out there too.
Lori, 21, you go get him by us from the west to the van from walking over to the kid in the van in the parking lot and doing a van back.
We saw it in the medical dispensary. We would just call the police. We watched the cameras. If we saw anybody do that, we were on the phone with the police. That's just not legal and we don't want that trouble, so.
And on a busy day, if you were approved, I'm going to assume you're going to have someone in the parking lot.
Yes, I think any busy, any busy day, I think that would have to be the case. Yep.
Can I, what is the state tax on that?
It's going to be 6.5% to this, 6.5% or 6.35.
That's all?
Well, there's an additional tax to that. So, the town gets 3%?
Not the town, not the state.
Right. The state gets the 6.35 plus. They're putting kind of a surcharge on the amount of THC in the product. So, the more THC, the more potent the product is, they're going to tax you more for it. So, how they're going to work that, yeah, it could be. Massachusetts is close to 20%, I believe.
I thought you said it would be cheaper to go down in some area.
The scary part about that is there's fentanyl and stuff out there on the street now. It's so scary. Everything in Connecticut's required to be lab-tested that's sold at retail. So, at least if you're buying it legally, you know you're getting a product that's going to be safe.
So, when you sell the product, could you tell me about childproofing? Do you childproof?
It's required by law to be childproof.
The edibles and the sprays?
Yep, everything. Yep.
And all that, okay.
Yep.
And what about a delivery?
So, that's new. Delivery is going to be allowed. So, we've never did it in our store in Uncasville because it wasn't allowed at the time, but that's going to be another brand-new thing. So, I don't have any experience to tell you about how that's going to work.
Are you going to participate in the delivery?
I honestly don't know. We haven't talked about that. I mean, I guess it's up to you.
That'd be pretty dangerous.
It will be legally allowed, right?
It's in the bill, so they can do it if they want to.
Right. Because they are, they're licensing delivery.
So, there'll be a security process, checking of ID that delivers.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that there's five people in a house and the 21-year-old comes out and that's alcohol.
Just like with alcohol, what can you do? But, yeah, the state is licensing delivery service companies as well.
So, if, so if they did that, would you participate in the delivery service?
I, you know, I have partners, so I would imagine they would want to, but we haven't discussed it, so I can't honestly say. But I would imagine if it's good for business, that's something they would want to do. But you'd be a, it would be a licensed delivery service that the state licensed that would come to us, pick up the products and then it's on them to do what they're legally obligated to do. Pardon me?
Doesn't have to be an armed guard delivering that.
It's done with alcohol already.
They stick up pizza, pizza-polling guys get stuck.
That's why, yeah, I mean, that's why when the state licenses the delivery people, I'm sure they're going to be, I don't, I don't think they can be armed, but I'm sure they're going to have security measures in place. But, once it leaves our facility, that wouldn't be, I guess, that wouldn't be our worry once it leaves, as long as it's leaving with a licensed person.
So, then for clarification, wouldn't it be one of your employees delivering?
Correct. It would not be.
A state licensed delivery?
Service, correct.
Thank you.
And there's limits to what you can sell to a person as well. So, they can't buy out the whole store.
Do you want to continue going over your layout?
Yes, so, in the center of the plan, there's vestibules on both sides of the lobby because there's parking on both sides of the building. And there's where the reception area is, there's, you're going to see one door going in. It'll be a separate door going out and they're both locked so that people in the lobby can't go in the outdoor and they'll have to be let in the indoor. And then, the service counter is there. In Connecticut, you're not allowed to put any products out on display. So, it's not like there's going to be, you're not walking down the aisle and just putting stuff in your basket. Everything is given to you at the counter. You go to the counter, let them know what you want. They go to the vault and get it and they bring it out to you. And so, it's, it's not like a grocery store where you can just grab stuff. Connecticut doesn't allow that. And the vault is there. That's where all the product has to be stored. Everything in Connecticut has to be locked up unless it's being sold. The receiving room is where we would get deliveries and products would come in there from the licensed growers and then would be taken directly to the vault. So, customers won't see that happening. It'll be behind the, behind the walls there.
When would you receive deliveries? I'm curious.
It'll, it'll depend on what they do with all these new growers, but in, right, currently with medical, there's four licensed producers and they each delivered twice a week to us, so we would receive eight deliveries a week. It's during business hours. Yep. And the state does require tons of security, so cameras would be everywhere, inside and out. The state requires that you keep your recordings for 30 days in case there is an incident. They have to be stored, so you can pull stuff back up again if there's a, if there's a problem. Luckily, in medical, besides little problems, like you mentioned, in the parking lot where we would have to call, we never had any burglary or, we never had any big incidents, so we were very lucky. And I can't think of any in Connecticut that did, except I believe the Milford dispensary had an overnight, someone attempted to break into that one once, but the rest, we all did pretty good as far as that criminal stuff goes. Everything on the right-hand side of the building is more for employees, break-room offices, things like that. So, the main area, patients would be coming into the lobby, getting IDs checked, going into the counter and then exiting through a separate door.
See, Lori, I see you have a storage with just an exterior.
Yeah, that'll be for like lawn mowers and landscaping stuff. Yeah.
There's no affiliation with the East Lime Police Department, right? There's no, come see, come saw, extra patrolling or anything?
I mean, if they want to, we'd be grateful. But nothing required by law. Yeah.
Could you tell me about the packaging of your edibles?
So, no packaging goes on in the retail place. Everything is created at the producer or the grower. They create the products, they package the products, comes to us already, childproof, sealed. We don't weigh anything out. We don't package anything in-store. So, it's all done at the grow facility and then it's brought to us.
So, you receive all free packaged?
Correct.
Right, but what do the packages look like? They don't look like, like cookies or gummy bears?
Everything looks, yeah, yeah, it's not, by law, in Connecticut, you're not allowed to package things to look appealing. So, it can't, like in Colorado and places, they have, you know, marijuana products, but it looks like gummy bears and they look like, the packaging looks like a real gummy bear packaging. Connecticut doesn't allow that and actually, they're actually trying to make all the packaging the same. They want it like to be all white with all certain size lettering and they're, they're actually trying to do that so that everything will look the same. They're not going to.
In Colorado, they have like a double-stuffed Oreo-looking cookie. That's another.
Yeah, yeah, Connecticut doesn't allow the packaging to look appealing. We have very strict advertising rules. Like no advertising can be done unless the audience you're advertising to is more than 90% over the age of 21, which is basically, I don't know, how you could possibly even advertise besides just your website?
If I may go over on that subject while signage is not per the commission, how will you identify the site? Do you have a freestanding sign?
There is a sign there now where I.
Do you have a name on it which will be, you know?
Probably Affinity because that's the name of the New Haven facility that's sponsor, you know, sponsoring the social equity applicant, so they want to keep their brand.
If I could go over the second line, identifying what the product is? So, on the screen, you're driving by, I'm not going to know what that is.
Right. Again, not something we've gone that far into discussing, but again, it might depend on what the state will allow us to do. Everything has, any advertising signage has to go to the state, to the DCP. They have to approve it. So, it would depend on if they can approve it. I'm sure we'd probably like to write the word cannabis or, but whether or not the state will let us is another, another story.
I think where he's going with it is like you're not going to have a sign up high enough so you can see it on the highway.
No. Sort of.
No joking now, no joking.
Yeah, like they've banned billboards now. There were some cannabis billboards in the state and they've tried, they're basically telling them to take them down. Very strict with advertising.
I think East Lime is a great spot for that. I think you're going to make a fortune. The parks and the beaches and the boating areas, you're going to make a fortune.
Well, in the summer, yes, that's for sure. And a lot of it will depend on how many other dispensaries are in neighboring towns. With the restriction of one per town, if you have less than 25,000 residents, at least they're not going to be on every street corner. They might be one per town, but some towns, you know, have banned it. So, it'll depend on how many surrounding towns have a dispensary, how much straw we get as far as customers.
In your experience with the medical marijuana, the facility was in Montauk, but as time went on, was it your experience that your sales became diluted because there was an expansion of other facilities?
Right, we were one of the, correct, we were one of the first six dispensaries licensed back in 2014. We opened and there were six of us maybe for the first year and a half, two years. Then they had another process for applications and they licensed three more. Then they licensed more again after that. So, total of right now is 18 dispensaries in the state. And so, yes, it did dilute, but it also, the program grew because they added more and more medical conditions that were allowed to use marijuana, so the patient base grew as well. So, we continued to grow the whole time. Any other question about the floor plan itself?
I have a question from Mr. Mahalan, just real quick. On the list of places that have to be 2,000 feet away, was the residential area ever on that list? I was trying to remember.
I don't think it was. Mr. Harris?
No, it wasn't.
Thank you. Well, we're kind of, I'd also like to add, Mr. Chairman, if you start to look at the site plan, if you look at it, it is a retrofit of an existing building, so it can be corrupted, site plan, however, I do have one question on site plan. Mr. Harris, could you talk to us about a, the chairman's favorite subject, sidewalks on Fulton Road? You are required to put one in.
Please do.
I don't see one on your site plan and your engineer is not here, so could you review that, please, please, sir?
I was actually going to bring it up, but that's okay.
We knew you were.
Sidewalks. We would accept, certainly accept the condition to place a sidewalk along the front.
It's a requirement, so you would add that to your site plan. Is that correct?
Yes, we would.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Chairman?
An area that doesn't require sidewalks.
Passion, W, and I'm just looking for replies with your regulations.
I know, I know. We have.
It's up to the commission and.
We have a pro sidewalk and an anti sidewalk.
I have a question about the 3% that gets back to the town. So, since you've had experience with your facility in Uncasville, how did they get the 3%? Like who decided? Did you get it to them or does it come, get funneled through the state and?
That was not a thing with medical marijuana, so there was no tax on medical marijuana at all. So, they consider it a medicine, just like if you bought Tylenol or anything else, you're not taxed on it. not taxed on it as a medical patient. Recreational will be another story, and that's where the tax comes in. The way that the bill is written, the dispensary is required to report monthly to the town, the sales. The town will then issue a bill for the 3%, and then it's paid by, so it doesn't go to the state and get lost. Because I remember in our last meeting, one of the state representatives was here, and she was concerned about, oh, they promised that, but the state never gives you what they promised you. But in this case, the money doesn't go to the state at all, it's a direct transaction between the town and the dispensary.
And there are restrictions, so, I know that Mr. Harris talked a little bit about them before, do you, do we know specifically a little bit more? Because I know that money can only go to certain things for the town.
Ms. Harris, that, that's not our jurisdiction?
Oh, no, I'm just asking-
Curious. Yeah, I'd have to pull up the, I can look for the regulation in my-
He talked about the restrictions, that's why I'm asking.
Right, I don't know if you have the full list, or not, but, I can find it.
The chair has a point, it's more of a, I'm assuming it's a question of curiosity, which I'm curious as well. But it's not necessarily an operative, because that's outside of your jurisdiction. And you said that's obviously climate.
Correct.
There were about six or seven different things, the only ones I can remember off the top of my head were streetscape improvements.
Sidewalks.
Possibly. A streetscape improvement. I know it was for drug education, and programs like that, programs for, gosh.
The public parks.
Yeah, and, had something to do with youth programs, too, but I can look at it on my phone and try to find it.
No, that's okay, I was just-
Maybe catch you at the end of the meeting, and I can let you know.
It was okay to ask, sorry.
Okay, I can sift through it while you guys are doing your thing, and I can tell you at the end of the meeting, maybe.
That's okay, that's all right, it's not an appropriate question, it's all right, I will, thank you though, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Terry, you good?
I'm good.
Any questions on the site plan itself?
Just one, Mr. Harris, the dumpster. I know it's not a big deal, but, being the type of establishment that it is, is this something to where it's going to be a locked?
So-
enclosure with a camera on it, or just, I'm just out of curiosity.
Yeah, no drug product ever goes in the garbage, everything's tracked by the state, so if something has expired, or something got damaged, we have to actually have this, take, a drug control agent has to come and destroy it. So, we don't, no product would end up in that dumpster at all, anyway. Actually, it's cardboard boxes and things that products come in, and regular garbage,
Yeah, it, it's just a question, because like, you and I both know that, but, for someone who's out there and about-
Dumpster diving?
Dumpster diving.
Actually, I lock it, because at the other store, we had people coming at night and dumping their stuff in there, and then we had to, of course, we pay for the dumpster service, so, we did end up putting a lock on it, just for that reason, at the other store, because people were using it for their own stuff.
So, does that, does the agent take it with them, or something?
With CWPM, I think we used, you know, dumpster service, they would come at, once a week, and-
The state-
Oh, the drug control agents?
Yeah, the same as prior items, if they take it to the burn, or didn't they?
They do destroy it. During COVID, we had to destroy it in the store, and we had to be on video call with the drug control agent, and they had us put it in, like, we had to get like a, it sounds silly, but, like a big laundry soap bottle, and put kitty litter and water in it, and then we had to show her what we're, just say, this is what we're destroying, and we had to put it in there, and we had to shake it all up, and it was, you know, but they just destroy it somehow. They don't dump it down, I know it's not good to the toilets and stuff, but, what they actually do with it, if they take it, uh-
And again, that's a curiosity question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lori, I just do have another quick question. Now, granted, obviously, it's the state law, we cannot prevent them from smoking outside, but, are you going to have like signs, or anything like that, encouraging them not to light up?
They can't smoke on-site.
That's state law.
That's state law.
Yes, there would be signage, but there, we would also have to be patrolling the parking lot for that.
So, maybe this might be off the track a little bit, but, so similar to like liquor control when it comes to bars and package stores, and if there's a issue that arises in town, either a traffic, a public nuisance, some uptick in some issue recognized by the police department, does your packaging identify you as the retailer? Because off the liquor control-
No, just the receipt would, so the packaging would have the manufacturer's information on it, because they created the product.
Because I'm sure you understand that, like, similar to liquor control, when you have a problem with an establishment, they'll go after the establishment.
Yeah, in medical, we had a label on it that would have our name, but in recreational, they won't require a medical label. So we would have a label with directions and dosing and things like that, for the medical reasons.
Specifically, underage use, or, you know, some ongoing problem in town with teenagers buying it illicitly, and, you know, we're going to find a package in their car from your facility with your identifiers on it, because that, you know-
Yeah, it wouldn't have our identifiers, it would have the producer's identifiers on it. So you would know it was a product created in the legal medical, in the legal recreational program, but you wouldn't know where they bought it.
Right.
Or where they got it from.
But the state would have records.
Possibly.
And then sales recorded, right?
Yeah.
It's recorded from the supplier, and it's recorded, and then sales recorded somewhere, right? You said they tracked the-
Yep.
I think it's one of these things where he's also leaning towards is, if you drive down the side of the road now, you see like all these little nips, stuff like that. Is this something to where we're going to see like a state taxed, a bagged, excuse me, wrong terminology, added on to the product's sale? You know what I mean? Like a five cent deposit on a baggie?
Oh, not that I know of.
Like a tax stamp on cigarettes?
There's nothing like that in the regulations, so.
You know what I'm getting at, though, right?
Yeah.
I don't see that as being a problem, above that thing, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
I move we close the public hearing.
Time out. Hold on. Do I have any comments from the public, either for or against that application? Anyone? Please, step right up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Marianne Milner, and I live at One Applewood Common, East Lime. I am opposed to this. I disagree with the fact that it will not affect East Lime. There's no way, it can't not affect East Lime. One in 10 people who use marijuana are addicted, and that addiction rate goes up when they're 18 or younger, it's one in six. So it's very scary as a parent for me, and also, basically just our town, the landscape of our town, I completely disagree and don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on, now I will take a motion.
Okay, I move we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Moving on, regular meeting, actually, time out. Thank you, Ms. Markovich, Mr. Peck, please join us. Moving on, regular meeting, application of Wayne Frazier for Niantic Bay Nutrition for a special permit to operate a juice bar. Take out food only, at 81 Pennsylvania Avenue. Discussion.
I think it's-
You want to talk about the juice?
I think it's a great addition to the village.
I agree with that.
I've never been to a juice bar, so I really, I don't know.
They're good.
I know, they're healthy for you and stuff like that.
Well, the product they use, Herbalife, is good. It's been around a long time, it has a very good reputation, and, yeah, it's good stuff.
I have heard of Herbalife, that is true.
So, we can sit down on the street, get a bottle of juice?
I mean, I personally, I, I think it's, it's great, in all honesty.
Yeah, I think it's great, it's a town, it's, you know, a lot of healthy, active people walk in the boardwalk, and there's a gym right across the street, and, you know, it promotes healthy lifestyle.
Yeah, it's something we don't have.
That's a good point, with the gym across the street. Yeah.
Walk across the street.
I'd go to Dairy Queen, but that's just me.
I think with the, with the boardwalk, we see all the walkers, runners, a lot more people getting into health and services, add to that experience.
I agree with that. Mr. Peck, any comments?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the application of Wayne Frazier for Niantic Bay Nutrition for a special permit to operate a juice bar. Take out only, no food, at 81 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Thurler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Motion carries, 600. Thank you, moving on, I'd like to recuse Mr. Peck again. And invite Ms. Denise Markovich back up. Okay. Comments? Conversations?
I think there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, that's new. I just have something we have to keep an eye on. I, I think I have some concerns about influx of traffic, the amount of volume in the business, the security, and just the overall safety of the patrons. Patrons, I mean, they're the town's responsibility, so, may require increased, increased police presence, you know, I think it's, there's some things that remain to be seen. I don't think it's going to be perfect, but, it's not going away either.
I believe that given the owner's experience in dealing with this, and her medical dispensary in Montville, that adds a lot of credence, and, I'm satisfied with the security. She's addressed every issue that we've, we've asked her about, and, I guess, traffic could be a concern, but it's so far out of the mainstream of the town, that it, it's not going to be a big deal, I don't believe.
That's a good comment, huh?
I, go ahead. Go ahead, Ann.
Oh, no, I know I'm the only one that thinks this, but, you know, we have a list of places that needs to be 2,000 feet away from, and I know it's closer than 2,000 feet to Rocky Neck Village, where there are a lot of kids. I know it's been brought up that the entrance to Rocky Neck is on West Main, and there's a gate across the back entrance, but, you know, you can just walk around the gate, it's not anything that would keep you from going through the back, and, knowing there's problems with people selling to underage kids, and there's a lot of kids that live in that neighborhood, I just think it's too close to a residential area.
I agree with what Ann just said as well. I also have great concerns and questions due to the traffic that it's going to cause, because, it's going to create a lot of business, but the traffic issues, I think, are going to be a big issue. The public nuisance, probably, and the delivery of it to minors, but, and the proximity, as Ann just stated, is a huge concern, and I think it's something that we need to take very seriously. So I have a lot of concerns about this.
Well, I think the traffic will work itself out. Anything starting right away, there's a big crowd, and a week later, it's all leveled out, so, I'm not really concerned about traffic myself.
It's also hard to deny that the town will benefit greatly from this financially, and I think that's, that is the selling point, right there. It's going to happen, it's here, it's legal in the state of Connecticut. I think East Lime should be part of the beneficiary of that. It's not down on Main Street, it's, it's out in the woods, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Right, but it, and, with that being said, it's still against federal law, it's violating federal law to smoke or-
What is? I think, I think that's the banking laws.
No, I looked it up today, it's, it's against the federal law for marijuana.
Yeah, but we're, we're the United States of America, we're not under a federal jurisdiction.
We didn't discuss it, what you're going to-
I'd like to just make my comments, if I may.
Can I just finish one thing, and then I'm done?
Sure.
Under the federal law, as it is today, they will not handle, or, the banks won't handle any of the money from, from selling this stuff, so there'll be a lot of, at least, I'm pretty sure that they have not changed their laws, so there'll be a lot of loose change floating around. The banks don't handle it, because the federal law is against it.
I got you. You know, my personal views, you know, you've all have your, your views on us, and stuff like that. I, myself, see it as, you know, a positive in terms of a business, one for the town. And like what Ms. Markovich said, it is here, it's been here for a very long time, and now for, to finally become legal for recreational use, I think the town of East Lime can benefit from that, you know? In terms of the traffic, I agree with Mr. Dwyer, it will work itself out. I mean, it's something to where, a new business opens up, yes, you're going to have an influx of business. You know, like Ms. Renda said, you know, like, when Massachusetts opened up there, they had, you know, an eight-hour wait outside, you know? And then in terms of this, you know, security aspect of it, you know, you, people are going to use it regardless, if it's legal or not. People drink now. There's package stores, close to residential neighborhoods. Okay? So you've got, if you're looking at that aspect of it, and being close to a residential neighborhood, you know, we got package stores that are like pizza houses. They're right next door, you can knock on the door. And I think, you know, the applicant being an established medicinal supplier, I guess you may say, or retailer, she has that experience, to where, they're not a dummy, they know how to run it, you know, just like, you know, they know how to sell booze, you know, that's the way it is. Yeah, there's going to take some work to get it right, but I think the town will benefit greatly, in a business like this, because what other businesses do we have in town to where we're going to get a portion of their revenue? We don't, you know? And the town needs a lot of sidewalks, just for the record. You all know that. That's my two cents for now.
And I can, uh-
Excuse me, Mr. Mahalan?
Just, clarification. The applications for special, the real issue is, it's a land use application, does the outfit meet the rules that you adopted, if they do, and/or if they don't? So that's really what we're looking at, or what you're looking at as a, as a group, so what's in your code book, is the regulations?
The use.
Your decision, so I will leave it there, just so that we don't get in trouble somewhere else, or later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahalan. Ms. Jep?
No, I'm all set.
Did you answer your question there?
Oh, yes, you did.
You were going to say, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Well, I think, they have the hours, we should permit them the, the option of closing early, and, and when we approve the application.
We also have to keep in mind that, you know, she is not granted the license yet, you know, so there is a possibility to where this may not even happen, keeping that in mind. But I agree with you in terms of the hours, you know, like Attorney Harris said, you know, like, they may fluctuate a little bit, in terms of-
I thought you said they had the application. You just said-
They have to get approved.
I thought you-
Applied. By the state.
I thought they already had the application approved.
No.
Well, it will be approved because it's a social equity joint venture, it's not-
So, you're basically guaranteed?
Right.
So, yes, okay.
Okay.
I retract my statement, it will happen. Okay?
I'm watching you.
Thank you. Ms. Markovich, all set?
All set.
All set, Terry?
Yeah, I mean, there's, it fits, you know, with the, with the zoning regulations, and I think there's a lot of oversight by consumer protection that you're going to have to deal with, and a lot of that, it does deal with quality of life issues, and safety, and other And a lot of that does deal with quality of life issues and safety and other things that, you know, taxpayers are concerned about. And so, you know, obviously, you know, you do have a good track record. And we just, I would hope that you ensure that it's a safe facility, that traffic is, you know, dealt with and regulated and that the patrons are safe. And if there's illegal activity in the parking lot that it's addressed, then you run a clean operation that benefits the citizens.
Yeah, I think the traffic is something to keep the eye on, because I know there's like 100 people twice a day coming out of Capitol Drive and turning onto Colton Road from that doggy daycare and they're in a hurry. They've had signs monitoring speeds out there actually, so I just think it's gonna.
She goes to doggy daycare.
But they have been monitoring speed. I think it's gonna be an issue. I just think they should monitor it.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Ms. Thurler. Mr. Dwyer, you're good?
No, I'm fine now.
Myself, I'm fine too. With that, I will take a motion.
We don't know what the real problems are. That's it. We're in the waters we haven't been in before.
Correct. At this time, I will take a motion. Anybody?
Do we have to read something? I have a motion to. I make a motion to approve the application of Fresh Lime Partners LLC for a special permit to operate a cannabis establishment pursuant to section 11.2.13 of the East Lime Regulations at property identified in the application as 15 Colton Road, East Lime Assessors Map, 9.0 Lot 14. Are we doing that with conditions or with?
I second the motion.
We don't need a condition.
No conditions, okay. I thought you were talking about hours of operation.
No, it's time to.
I think that was in your presentation.
Thank you.
And that was, Mr. Dwyer, you seconding that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Against.
Against.
Abstain?
Really?
Yeah.
Me too.
Motion carries, four two zero.
Mister Chairman, publish on, next Thursday, effective on Friday. I'm not sure what that date is.
For both applications, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Publish next Thursday, effective on, next day's Friday.
Say twenty first. Is that the twenty ninth? We'll figure it out. Thank you. Mr. Peck, please be seated. Thank you, Ms. Markovich. Moving on. Mr. Dwyer? Moving on, the approval of minutes of April 7th, 2022.
Mister Chairman, I think I have to recuse myself in the reading of the minutes. I wasn't here last.
You will just abstain.
Abstain, okay.
We have a motion to approve.
I approve the, approve the minutes. I'm looking for goddamn date.
April 7th, 2022.
What was the?
April 7th.
April.
Of April 7th, okay. I got it right here now.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Thurler.
I approve the meeting of April 7th.
Seconded by Ms. Thurler. All those in favor to approve? Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
I do. Yep.
Thank you very much. Old business, there is none. New business, the application of Martin Zavala. Zavala Mexican Bistro for a special permit for outdoor dining at 135 Boston Post Road, East Lime. Mr. Maholland, you'll schedule that?
Thank you.
Any business on the floor, if any, by the majority of the commission? Myself, I'm all set. Anybody? Good? Moving on, Mr. Maholland?
Well, I'm actually busy. Assistant building official has taken over downstairs and doing the final job. And I believe they're also hiring a replacement for Tom. So that makes long, but you're obviously busy. The commission is not as busy as we've been in past years for a variety of reasons. I'm working with some potential developments. There are infill developments or redevelopments. I don't wanna say too much, but they all may come before you. And I don't know whether they'll get to that stage or not, but there's a lot of people calling the office with ideas and potential developments. He has 675 projects underway. They're out there working now. The one on Y5 Main Street, if you haven't been by there, framed him already. They're moving very quickly. We've had a couple inquiries on the old police station. Some people bird dogged it. So there's interest downtown and it continues to be. And then the Mexican restaurant, you'll see that for their outdoor because they want to serve alcohol and so they'll be in for that. So we'll go there when it comes. But he'll be open soon too, because as you probably noticed, we've added three or four restaurants during the pandemic, which is pretty good for a small town like ours. And then this one's in addition. And this Mexican restaurant is operated by the folks in Stony Creek Village, a Mexican restaurant. So they have a lot of experience, so hopefully it'll be good. And that's what I have. Thank you.
I have a quick question on the condos on Main Street. Do you think they're considering maybe putting a sign in front that says, "Parking's Off-A-Grand"? I know, you know, there are other stores to the right that are a little concerned that people are going to be in their parking lot, going to like Sif Bakery or the Fish Market.
I don't foresee that happening, but you never know. People come out of town, et cetera, et cetera. And once we get a little closer to the building being finished, we're gonna go look at the sign package a little closer and see if we need to make some improvements. The developer's been extremely cooperative and he has, he is like a loyal machine.
He's a smart businessman.
Yeah, and, and so he's been more than cooperative and helping out a lot of things. And so we'll go and look at that as we get a little closer, as we get an opportunity to reassess. And we'll probably have something, whether it's a three standard center, maybe say apartment's rear access, but we will do something. But that sort of has come up because there is no access for me, which many of us think is probably a safer way to do business in that location. Because we all know everybody drives safely there, you know, they should, but they do. And so we.
No.
Or safety. And so that's what I have. Thank you.
What's the status of the ordinance for the FEMA issue?
I was at the board select meeting last night to answer questions about the board. They have moved that to public hearing. So that should be adopted at that public hearing after the meeting is mine. I don't have a date yet. We had to add one item that I discovered yesterday afternoon. Your, my decisions are appealable to ZVA. Many decisions on the ordinance, it's appealable to the Board of Selectmen. And they will have the power to get bearings, just as the ZVA does. We haven't had anybody ever get a bearings, but you have to put those items in place. And so I would anticipate that that's going to be approved after public hearing, which I think is next month, but I'm not sure yet.
Have you given any thought to the CA? What we talked about a couple of meetings ago?
The.
Adapting the tax amendment?
For Flanders.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm working on that. I worked on it yesterday. A little more involved than what I initially thought it was gonna be. I gotta tweak the reg a little bit to reflect that area, which is unique and to itself, the characters different than Niantic Village. So I think we should embrace that for the best part of the community. I don't think they vote, the reg works for both as written, but it's minor. And then we have to figure out the dimension. We're not quite there yet. Our staff will move what our boards are. But we'll have that ready. It's almost.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Moving on, comments from the Expositio. Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, hi, Dan Cunningham. Rosie Anne Hardy could not be here tonight, so I'm here in her place. And you stole my thunder. I was gonna mention that we did schedule a public hearing on flood regulations. And so that's moving forward. The, we did discuss the historical society, picking over the facility and Flanders Road, our Boston Post Road facility. And we discussed some of the concerns and things that will have to be addressed in public that happened. Another thing that came up, wasn't on our agenda, but it came up in some of the comments. There seems to be a great interest in this game. It's called pickleball?
Pickleball?
Pickleball, right? That's what I know. But, uh, but we've, in some of the other commissions, I've, Expositio, Parks and Rec, there were some folks there that were very, very interested in saying the town could expand access to pickleball courts. So we talked about that a little bit at the meeting last night in the comments. And it seems to be a great interest, so I don't know if that'll be something that ends up in front of this board. I don't, I don't know if this is a zoning issue or something. That seems to be the topic these days. That's my report. Any other, any questions I could answer on our meeting last night?
I would just add that I've already had some applications for pickleball courts and private residences. It's a very hot item right now everywhere. Everybody's picking up the game.
You know, 10 years ago at Rotary Meeting, someone talked about pickleball. I said, "What the heck is pickleball?" And now it's all I hear about. So.
There are tournaments on TV.
Yeah, someone retired around South Carolina and came back and told them about pickleball. But yeah, no, it's a, it's a big deal. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
That's it. That's all we got.
Okay. Moving on. Comments from the zoning board liaison to planning. I don't know who it was. It was canceled as well last month? Thank you, Mr. Kansberg. Next up is Debbie Jett.
Yeah, we have been, East Lime has been in the papers quite a bit lately about affordable housing. It's nice to read about it.
That is correct. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
You read my mind.
Yes.
You can't hide us.
Nope. Comments from the chairman, myself. Yeah, we've been in the paper, but it is what it is, as they say. Myself, summer's coming. Let's see.
When?
What's that?
When?
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, could you please tell me when the next planning meeting that I have to be at?
Oh, I just changed the page. I think it's the 10th, Debbie. It's in your minutes there. Yep, the 10th of May.
Thank you.
If they have one. Okay. On that, I'm all set. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry on.